This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, February 19, 2025. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by E-Media on Charter Channel 193 and live streaming on their webpage, easthamptonmedia.org. Councillors and participants in this meeting are gathering hybrid, gathering hybrid, yes, on the order extended until March 25th, allowing us to do so. I remind both members of the city council and the public, participating remotely, to remain muted until recognized by the city council president. Also, for the members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in the public speak time or in the public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara?
Connie Denham, Salem Derby, Felicia Jodzik?
Here.
JP Kozinski?
Here.
Tom Peak?
Here.
Robert Riley?
Here.
Tamara Smith?
Here.
JT Terrell?
Here.
I'd ask for a moment of silence. And the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will work toward it. Before we begin this evening, I wanted to make a short announcement. With the absence of our President Salem Derby, I have moved up in the world to become your acting vice, acting president this evening. And with the absence of the mayor from the city for a period of time, I will be acting mayor in East Hampton. So, given that, I would like to be the following powers of acting mayor, so that we can be clear about something. The acting mayor shall only have those powers as mayers may be necessary to conduct the business of the city, and this is quoted from Charter Section 3.8b. In an orderly and efficient manner which may not be delayed, the acting mayor shall have no authority to make any permanent appointment or removal of a city on service unless the disability of mayor shall extend beyond 60 days. She'll be back way before then, I hope. And nor shall the acting mayor approve or disapprove of any measure adopted by the city council unless the time within which the mayor must act would expire before the return of the mayor. This is the really critical part. During any period in which any member of the city council is serving as acting mayor, such councillors shall not vote as a member of the council. So I will not be voting tonight. I see five individuals here. All five must agree to pass anything tonight. So if there's one dissent, it fails. That being said, we have minutes from the February 5th meeting, 2025. I would entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
With a motion and a second, any discussion? Barbara? Oh, all those in favor. We're all here, right? So we can do that. All those in favor. I'm not voting, so. Passes. Public comment. Anyone who would like to speak to the council and to the city, please feel free to do so. You will have up to three minutes to speak on any topic of your choosing. Please identify yourself and your street address at the minimum.
Do I have to give my street address? Can I just say precinct?
Well, we ask for your street address. That's our request.
Okay. Peg Coniff, Precinct 1. Good evening, councillors. Thank you for entertaining the reaffirmation that the mayor has put before you of the welcoming community trust ordinance. It's important, I think, tonight, but also especially in these times that we're in that are rapidly changing and difficult. This ordinance has been in place since July of 2019. I have a certain pride in being part of the council at that time where we passed this particular ordinance. We are currently in what seems like the 31st year of this administration, but it's only the 31st day, and the pace of change is staggering and troubling, particularly on the subject of immigration. The misinformation, cruelty, and ignorance of this administration is purposeful. We have been led to believe that undocumented immigrants are the scourge of this country. The reality is that most are here and have been here, working for years. Most work in our communities, send their kids to school, pay taxes, which, by the way, fund a lot of services they can never access, like food stamps and Medicaid. Those who live in East Hampton are your neighbors, your coworkers, and your children and their children play together daily. This ordinance ensures that East Hampton resources will not be used to do the work of the federal government. In the absence of a criminal warrant, being undocumented is a civil problem. There is no need for the police or other city workers to provide information to ICE on any individual who is undocumented merely because they are undocumented. I am reminded of the parable of the starfish, which I'm sure you all know. After a storm, thousands of starfish washed up on the shore. A small child walked along the beach, picking up starfish after starfish, throwing them back in the ocean. When asked why they're doing this, that it cannot possibly make a difference, that there's just too many starfish to save, the child leaned over, picked up a starfish, threw it in the ocean, and said, "It made a difference to that one." In reaffirming the welcoming community trust ordinance, we have the opportunity to make the lives of our neighbors, of our friends, make a difference in the lives of our neighbors and our friends, and we should embrace that now more than ever. On a side note, and I don't know if any of you have the answer, part of the ordinance was to provide annual reporting on the number of ICE interactions the city has had. And when we first did this ordinance, I believe the former police chief, Bob Alberti, said zero. I'm hoping that's still true, but at some point, not tonight, but at some point, if you could make it clear if that's been an ongoing process, we're supposed to do it annually, and if not, what's the latest numbers at some point. Thank you.
Thank you. As we always do at public speak, the council is not at liberty to respond directly to specific questions in that fashion, so none of the members will be doing so. However, at any time, please feel free to reach out to any or all of us to, if your questions are ever not answered, or you have any questions.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Leslie Scharr. I've lived in the Pleasant View Apartments on Nashawonic Street for 11 years. When my husband turned 76, we decided that we could not maintain our property in New Salem on Eagleville Pond any longer. So we went looking, and we fell in love with an apartment in East Hampton and with East Hampton. We went from Eagleville Pond to Nashawonic Pond. We still look out our back windows and always see our woods and water. It's wonderful. And as East Hampton sure has a lot more to offer than the New Salem General Store. When the complex was sold to the prior owners, we were never presented with lease. We were month to month. And in the last year, the new people got leases, but not the long-term people. In mid-November, after the complex had been sold again, this time to an out-of-state LLC, we were presented with a lease in mid-November and told there would be a 40% rent increase effective February 1st. Now, the former owners had given us a rent increase in spring 2024. My rent check between 2024 and February 2025 is 51% higher. And there is absolutely nothing anyone can do about it because Massachusetts ended rent control in 1994. The United States Housing and Urban Development says, on average, in Massachusetts, you need to make $93,268 a year to afford a two-bedroom apartment. There's a movement on Beacon Hill for a new, more realistic rent control, rent stabilization act than the one that they threw out. It's known as SD 1084 and HD 2501. I'm here to ask you, our city council, to let John Bealas and Omar Gomez know that you support rent control or rent stabilization. We do not need another predatory out-of-state LLC buying more privately-owned apartments in East Hampton and raising rents higher and making people homeless. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Destin Germany. I am a staff attorney at Central West Justice Center. I am piloting a community lawyering project there. And I am here to speak on behalf of the organization, and we want to reiterate that we believe that housing is a human right. And we are concerned about rent increases and the displacement of tenants in Massachusetts abroad, but particularly here in Western Mass. We support tenants' rights to organize globally, and also more specifically here in East Hampton with the Pleasant View residents. And we encourage East Hampton City Council to do what you can to ensure that rents are affordable and that tenants are not displaced. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Mercedes. I'm a community organizer with Springfield No One Leaves. Massachusetts is in the midst of a severe affordable housing crisis. Rents continue to rise with no end in sight, making it harder for working families, seniors, and young professionals to stay in the communities they call home. We have the second highest cost of living in the nation, and more than half of our residents spend over a third of their income just to keep a roof over their head. This is unsustainable. People are leaving Massachusetts because they simply can't afford to live here anymore. Specifically, Pleasant View apartment residents just got bought out by an out-of-state LLC, and they were issued a 40% rental increase with a threat of 50% if they didn't agree to it within 10 days, and it was during the holidays. That's unacceptable. Housing is a human right. We need real solutions to protect our communities from these out-of-control rent hikes. That's why I ask you guys to support the state bill HD 2501 and Senate Bill SD 1084. It's an act that would enable cities and towns to stabilize rent and protect tenants from unfair increases. One key provision would cap rent hikes at no more than 5% per year, which would prevent price gouging that pushes residents out. Enough is enough. We must stand up for renters, keep our communities together, and demand action. Contact your local state reps and senators in the Massachusetts State House and tell them to support House Bill HD 2501 and Senate Bill SD 1084 to bring fairness and stability to Massachusetts rental market.
Hello, Carolyn Cushing, Main Street, Precinct 4, and I'm following my more eloquent compatriots, number one. And Peg Coniff laid out the case for the city council reaffirming this welcoming community trust ordinance that was so supported by the community. We've spent many years working on it, and it was great when we finally had then-councillor Coniff and Gomez to be champions. And it's really important that we give this message that immigrants are welcome and safe. They don't feel safe in places across the state, people I know and have talked to. And so for us publicly to affirm that our neighbors, the people who work in our community, our friends, the parents of children, we know that they're as safe as can be in Massachusetts, in East Hampton. And then, second, on the rent, I just to say that, yes, please communicate to Senator Bealas and Representative Gomez the support for these legislation that would make rent more sustainable potentially. I was on a call last night with a dozen community members, and we were talking about this very problem and how to support, find ways to have this legislation supported. And I'm lucky enough to own my own home. I do have an attached apartment. I'm a landlord, and I support this kind of control so that people can live and thrive in our communities. That's it. Thank you so much. Oh, and thank you to all the councillors who were on the council when we passed the ordinance. So I'm looking forward to it just being affirmed again. Councillor Peak and Kozinski and who was on then? So, and Councillor Derby and was Councillor Coniff and Councillor Gomez. So, thank you very much.
This will be the last speaker from the audience. If you'd like to say something more further, we have public hearings coming up, and everyone who is here remotely will have the opportunity after the public hearings. Please.
Katha Wuzinski, Overlook Drive. I want to first note that I'm being told that there are people waiting in the waiting room and not able to get in.
Everyone that we have admitted, I apologize, but everyone who was here-
It's just the text I'm getting. I just wanted to relay it.
Everyone is with us, according to this screen here.
Great. Thank you. I wanted to talk about two things. First, the welcoming city ordinance. I do not believe it is appropriate for East Hampton to ignore any ICE detainers, and I hope that that is not happening. I do believe we risk federal funding if that does occur. Illegal aliens should not be staying in our communities. They should not be using our resources, and they should be heading back to their own communities. We support immigrants who come here legally and do it the way that all of our predecessors have, with sponsors and coming in legally. It's important that we continue to support that and not allow illegal aliens to continue to invade our communities. Secondly, there are better solutions to managing rents than putting in rent control. Why are rents going so high? In large part because overregulation in this state and overregulation in the city and increases in taxes and fees that are pressing homeowners and landlords to have to raise money in order to just make ends meet. There's not only one solution to this problem. It's important for us to consider all solutions and not just blame landlords for regulatory overburden by the government. Thank you.
We have public hearings this evening. At this time, I would take a motion to open the public hearings.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Not voting again? The public hearings are open. Councillor Riley?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Acting President/acting Mayor. Interesting to say that out loud. Yes, I just wanted to provide a little bit of background behind the public hearing tonight. So since September of 2024, the Public Safety Committee has been having ongoing dialogues with residents on West Street to discuss safety concerns with how quickly people drive down their street and the lack of pedestrian infrastructure to minimize speed and to prevent residents from, West Street from having to be so close to the road when walking. You know, throughout our committee meetings, we were able to find some relatively quick fixes for the residents. You know, two examples, we're having DPW put white lines on West Street to create visual markers for drivers, and then to also have the Police Department report out on some speed limit metrics. Obviously, more needs to be done. So serendipitously, in November, the council received a public request with support from the mayor to consider a broad policy approach that would lower the citywide speed limit to 25 miles per hour. So the public hearing tonight is to consider amending Appendix A of the traffic rules and orders. First, to add two definitions, which I will read into the record right now. The first being a business district defined as the downtown business, highway business, neighborhood business, industrial or mill-industrial districts as defined in the East Hampton Zoning Ordinance. And then the second definition to add is thickly settled, which is defined as areas in the city where homes are less than 200 feet apart on an average for a quarter mile or more. So, Councillor Kozinski, would you prefer that we discuss this in two pieces, or would you like me to present all of it at once?
I would be happy to discuss it in two pieces.
Okay, perfect.
If you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, so then that would be the first order of business before us, to, you know, talk about what these definitions are. If the language needs to be changed, what any thoughts any of you have on that?
Councillor Peak?
Just one thought, and it's sort of procedural. Mr. Acting President/acting Mayor, I would wonder if you would consider looking at this entire thing as a single item. And the reason for that is that, let's just say theoretically that the second item were to not pass, then the first item would be a little bit silly to pass. You know what I mean? Like, the first item is putting some business districts or some definitions in place that only makes sense to be in place if we're going to be putting, if we're going to be amending Article 7. So, just for that reason, I think, I mean, I have no objection to the districts, and frankly, I don't foresee either of these things not passing, but just to avoid, just given that we literally need everyone's votes right now, I'm wondering if it might make sense to consider this entire thing as a sort of binary package.
I would entertain that. Sure.
Okay, all right. So with those two definitions in mind, the next piece of the amendment would be to amend traffic rules and orders, Article 7, operations of vehicles by adding a new section 1-69, 25 mile per hour citywide speed limit. The language that would be added in would say, "The city shall observe a 25 mile per hour speed limit in business districts and in thickly settled areas in accordance with Mass. General Law's Chapter 90, Section 17C, with the amendment taking effect six months after the date of approval."
Now that we've read both into the record, any discussions or thoughts on this subject?
I have a quick question. I support this. I think theoretically, this is, safety-wise, a very good thing. What, if anything, are we looking at for fiscal responsibilities as far as signage or that upfront? Where is that, where are those monies going to come from?
Yeah, so we'd actually had some conversations about what would make the most fiscal sense. And this is actually the most affordable policy approach. So ideally, what we would need to do in this situation is if there are areas that do not qualify as business district or thickly settled, and that's very few. I don't know the totality of the map, but I looked across the city of East Hampton, and there are very few spaces where thickly settled does not apply. And so it would either be to leave the speed limits as they are in those areas, and then you don't need to do anything. But then if there are areas where the speed limit is being reduced down to 25 miles an hour, you don't actually have to put up signs everywhere. You can take down the old signs because the broad statement would be that throughout the city, it's 25 miles an hour.
Unless otherwise posted.
Right, unless otherwise posted. That's correct. Yeah, and, you know, and the thoughts as well for the, for having the six months before it takes effect. So, you know, we recognize at the committee level that this is going to take a lot of public education and outreach and time for messaging, not just to residents in East Hampton, but to also communities outside of East Hampton that travel through or visit, you know, for our restaurants, you know, or other cultural events. So, yeah, you can, you have a question?
So if, assuming this passes, would things be posted, would this be posted at the city limits, like on the Southampton line and the Northampton line and the Holyoke line?
I believe that's the intent, yes. And I know there are strategic areas throughout the city where DPW does this kind of advertisement. So, you know, as an example, when you are coming down Mount Tom Road, right next to Joy Winnie's house, there's usually a sign there that has some sort of messaging, you know, whether it's construction that's coming up or whatever the case may be. Another one that's very strategic is the Rotary right across from the New Library, right in the center of town. So yes, there are strategic places where we could provide that sort of messaging. And I think this would give us plenty of time to be able to do that outreach and education. And then, you know, I won't speak on behalf of the Police Department, but I think there's also an openness to a grace period, right? When it goes into effect, that it is not just 100% enforcement, right? If people are, like, let's say, as an example, they're adhering to the old speed limit that they knew was there. It's entirely possible people don't get the messaging on time. So that's my understanding. But I would have to, the Police Department would have to say for sure what their intent was, yeah.
Thank you.
Councillor Jazzy?
In addition to the signage, which I appreciate you explaining how we could take down signs instead of having to replace all of them, has the committee looked into any additional traffic calming strategies to be implemented in conjunction with a new speed limit, not just having it be signed in education, but bumps? Or you mentioned painting lines, things like that?
Yeah, so, you know, we did have some conversations about that. And I, you know, this is just, it's a confluence of multiple challenges. So first is, you know, that we have prevailing wages in Massachusetts. So when we have people who are doing the types of construction for those things, they are naturally going to get paid more to do the work. And one of the reasons for that is there's a recognition that people who are doing, you know, construction, blue-collar work, there is an actual tax on their body that lessens the longevity of their careers. So you pay them a fair livable wage upfront with the understanding that they're not going to be able to do this kind of work into their 50s and 60s, right? So it costs more to pay people to do this type of work. The second is that just building these types of resources is money that East Hampton doesn't really have right now. I want to say, if I remember the number correctly from Director Nudelman, that it would be about $90,000 to implement a speed bump or some variation of something like that. So, you know, when you start to think about the broader community and where you might want to put these in, the question becomes, do we try to find the places that need it most, but then what happens to the members of the community that think, well, why them and not us? And, you know what I mean? And it can get very expensive very fast, and it becomes an issue of equity. And then the last piece that I'll point on that is that just with the way inflation has been recently, doing any sort of DPW construction projects are much more expensive than they used to be. So.
Councillor Peak?
So I think I'm in favor of this for a couple reasons. I appreciate that it came from the community, and I appreciate that my colleagues put the work in, and I'm interested to see the results. But I just, I wanted to say for the record as we go in, I'm not super optimistic that this is going to slow a lot of people down. If it slows a few people down and maybe prevents a couple fatal crashes, then maybe it's worth it. But I just think, just, I'm not an expert on this at all, but it's something I've read a good deal about. Because when I became a city councillor, I wanted to read a lot about cities and how they work. And I think that there's a prevailing attitude that seems to be there among a lot of people. that people don't, for the most part, people don't, they're not often actually paying a lot of attention to their speedometers when they're driving. They're driving as fast as they feel safe driving. If you have people driving, if you have streets like Holy Oak Street where I live, that's very wide lanes, it's very flat, it's very straight, everything's set back from the road, it's designed somewhat like a race car track, people drive on it like it's a race car track because they feel safe doing so, they don't even realize how fast they're going, they're just driving at the speed that they feel safe. When they get to Cottage Street, they slow down, not because the speed limit drops, but because the tightness, the cars, everything about it, makes them no longer feel safe operating a vehicle at that speed. So, from that sort of general thought about traffic planning and things, I do think that traffic calming measures, like the type that Counselor Jajic was suggesting, are probably going to continue to be necessary for, like, expensive though they may be, I think that those sorts of things are going to be necessary if you want a lot of people to drive slower, because I simply don't, like, I simply don't think that most people are checking their speedometers a lot when they're driving, they're paying attention to the car in front of them, and they're paying attention to whether they feel safe. So psychologically, I just don't know if saying, hey, guess what, it's 25 miles per, they might note that going in when they're driving around a thickly settled neighborhood, are they going to note it? I'm not, I'm skeptical. Like, I'm, now, being skeptical is not the same as saying, I'm going to vote against it, because, again, if it gets a couple people to alter their behavior and be safer, then super. And, and maybe I'm wrong, and actually, we have some of the most obedient and law-abiding citizens in the world, and when they see this at the city's edge, they will immediately stop driving in a way that is helpful. And we do, we are seeing nationwide a huge increase in traffic fatalities, in part because a large group of our citizens insist on driving cars that look like small tanks despite not needing them for anything. So, for all those reasons, I think it's worth a shot, and so I'll back it on it being worth a shot, but I just, I don't, I want to register this concern going in, because if this happens and we're not actually seeing any statistical benefits from it, like, I won't be shocked.
All right. Counselor Smith, since you haven't had a chance to speak?
Okay.
Then I'd like to try to open it up to the public for their reaction and then come back to us.
Okay.
Okay. Well, first I want to, I want to just acknowledge that we have had pedestrian deaths in our city, and there has been a lot of call from the public asking us to do something about the speed limit as a result. And so, I think anytime that people have died as a result of not having something in place, I know we have speed limits in place, but the consistency is not in place. Having said that, I live out in the plains in Precinct 5. It's a pretty long, straight road to get there, and I cannot imagine people driving 25 that whole way. It's kind of the same thing as the other street. In my family, I have new drivers, and I have one particular new driver that absolutely will not go over the speed limit. And I cannot tell you how many times I have been in the passenger seat with him driving. People lay on their horn and follow us for a mile all the way home, and they do not let off of that horn. It's not intimidating enough to my kid to not do that, but I just want to also acknowledge that there may be increased incidences of road rage, and that's my biggest concern with lowering the speed limit. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone here in the hall who'd like to speak? This is your chance. Come on up.
Leslie Scher, Nashawonik Street. I have been followed down up Cottage, well, I've been followed, actually, started on Union Street to Cottage to Holy Oak Street. Been going 25 miles an hour on Union, 25 miles on Cottage, 30 miles on Holy Oak, and I've had this stupid jerk laying on the horn the whole way down. I've also been passed twice on Holy Oak Street. One time, somebody almost hit a kid. I would like to see the speed lowered, but like Tom, I don't think anything's going to happen. And I have talked to Dennis Scribner about it, and he doesn't have the money to patrol. And that's what he's told me. You know, I've also complained about being in the flashing light pedestrian crossing and having to stop and wave my hand so that people will stop as I cross. We need more safety patrols as well as lower speed limits, in my opinion. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Kathy Wazinski, Overlook Drive. I think that a 25 mile an hour citywide speed limit is probably overkill. I can see that in the business district and some of the more heavy populated areas in the center of town, a 25 mile an hour might make sense. We are looking at a problem of overcongestion, and the unfettered building and high-density building that is being allowed by the city committees is causing an increase in traffic, which is causing an increase in safety issues. 8,000 new cars are likely to be added to our roads in the next few years because of the high-density building. We are pushing cars out into the neighborhoods because of the foolishness that's being done in the center of town. People are avoiding the center of town because they don't want to deal with being backed up by CVS and other places for 10, 20 minutes at a time. And so they're going out into the neighborhoods because of the overcongestion that's being caused by unused bike paths and other issues. Safety tables, those speed tables, those are great. They don't slow down traffic so much that people are frustrated trying to get home after a hard day's work. I think a 25 mile an hour speed limit is, citywide, is not, is not, is not something that's going to, going to work. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I am Steve Natupski, I'm from 18 Mineral Street in East Hampton, and I've lived here for probably close to 50 years. A little shy of that, really, but, but not a lot. I think 25 miles an hour driving anywhere is unreasonable. It's just, it's just, it's just, you look at, you're going through the town and the speed limit says 25 miles an hour, you look at your speedometer and you're going 35 miles an hour. And it's just uncomfortable to drive 25 miles an hour, just with the cars they build today. And it's just not, not a smart idea. It's like creating a law that nobody can keep, can keep in the, and then the higher-ups will have the discretion to stop them or not. But I came in late, I really was coming in to speak against the welcoming city, I think that's a terrible idea.
If I, that was the time at, beginning of the public, of the, but this is the public hearing section, you're welcome to speak and continue to speak on the subject if you'd like.
Okay, Jimmy, the reason, the reason that, that I was late today is because I was working out of town and I had to drive down 141 onto Cottage Street, and it was gridlock, I couldn't, the cars weren't moving. And I was, I was 10 minutes late to this meeting, and that had a lot to do with it. Thank you.
I will say that we will continue to have public hearing, the public speak, Mr. Natupski?
Yes.
We will be continuing public speak after this, so you would still have a chance to speak again on that subject. I didn't want, mean to say you couldn't speak about it. Anytime, we still have public hearing open, or public speak open, public hearing time, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here?
Lindsay.
How do we do this?
She can just speak.
Uh, I see Lindsay, would you like to unmute yourself?
Hi, Lindsay Sekula, Mother Street resident. Speeding concerns have been heavy on my mind lately, living in a residential neighborhood where I regularly see cars speeding down my street. And I don't have the solutions, but I appreciate Counselor Riley's comments on equity issues when we're talking about speed bumps. I, of course, would love a speed bump on my street, but then we certainly can't afford to provide them for everyone who wants them either. So my thoughts offered to the council would be, or my suggestion would be, that we wait to take any action on this until we hire our new police chief, which is in the process, and allow a new chief to come on board and be a part of this discussion, and work with our current administration and mayor on possible solutions for going out for an RFP, to hire a consulting company, to do a citywide assessment with the new police chief and our DPW director on what streets have the most accidents, what streets are most utilized, and go from there. So I just think there needs to be more of a process in place with the leadership that would ultimately handle the enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Perry, you may unmute yourself and have up to three minutes.
Hi, I am Liz Perry, I'm a resident on Orchard Street, and living on Orchard Street, I've had a lot of near misses trying to take a left onto Cottage Street, so, you know, I appreciate the idea of a 25 mile speed limit, if that's what the town thinks is best. I am definitely willing to slow down in order to allow more cars on the road, if that's also what it takes. Whatever it is, I would like to see a speed limit or something more than police patrolling. I don't think we should be adding any more budget money to the police department to fix this solution. I do like Lindsay's idea of perhaps getting an assessor to figure out a plan. But yeah, I'm willing to slow down, though, and allow more cars on the road for new residents that come with the new building that's going to be here soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the remote section that would like to comment on this subject? Seeing no one. Huh, I just at the last second. Michael Owens, you may unmute yourself.
Evening, Councilors, Mike Owens, Northampton Street. I think the, I just want to say a couple of quick things. I think that if this passes tonight, you're basically, city council is basically giving an unfunded mandate to the city. You're saying it's going to cost a lot of money to do these signs. Where's the money to get it done? I know there's a six-month delay. I don't know, it just seems, seems a little bit ridiculous. Secondly, I think 25 mile an hour citywide speed limit will cause a lot of additional road rage. Former speakers have talked about that. I traveled the speed limit in town, and people tailgated me inches off of my bumper. And, and it's crazy, it's crazy how fast people go out on our roads. I just want to suggest you, that you think out of the box on this a little bit. There was a 30 mile an hour speed limit sign out in front of my house, or actually, close to my house. That speed zone goes for about two and a half miles. I'm going to suggest that that speed zone should be 27 miles per hour. Now, that does two things. No one ever sees a 27 mile an hour speed sign, so it catches people's attention, and then people in their cars immediately look at their speedometer, and they say, boy, I'm going 33, and the sign says it's 27, maybe I'll slow down to 30. So this, this is a valid way to get people's attention, to focus on the speed that they're going, and the lawful speed set for that particular roadway. So I just want to throw that out there, and thanks very much.
Thank you. Amy, Amy Gogger, you may unmute yourself. Wait a minute, no, it's an admit, sorry. My apologies. Amy, can you hear me now? Were you here for public speak? If you were, you may unmute yourself. Not not for public speak, but rather for the public speak of the hearing regarding the amending of traffic rules and ordinances. I see someone who is identifying themselves as Prevent PA. You're up.
Hi, yeah, my name is Darlene Orvieto. Sorry, I haven't used this platform in a while, so I didn't realize. So I have a neighbor on Mother Street who has, for years now, sped down Cherry Street. And of course, we were told with the whole Cherry Street reconstruction mess, that speeding would, would be controlled because it's a thoroughfare that people use from Clark. And of course, that wasn't true. People still speed down Cherry Street. I very politely asked him if he would slow down, to just think about kids and pets, and now he curses at me every time he sees me. So I really think that people are going to ignore this. I think it's going to put undue stress on the community, I think it's going to put undue financial strain on the community, definitely overkill. It's not going to make a difference, it's going to put stress on the police station, police force, and I think you should just, like Michael said, think outside the box, and I love his idea of putting something up that will actually make people, you know, think twice, look twice, and be more conscious of how they're behaving on the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the remote section? Seeing none. Counselor Riley?
Yes, I just wanted to address a lot of points and questions that were brought up, both from the council and from the public. So, you know, what we're actually talking about here is the difference between people dying and not dying. The 25 mile an hour speed limit number was not made up arbitrarily. During the Public Safety Committee meetings, we spoke with people that work in the emergency room, and 25 miles an hour versus 30 miles an hour is the difference between dying on impact at 30 miles an hour, or being hospitalized and requiring surgery but you're still alive, right? That's the difference. The five-mile difference between 25 and 30 is the difference between whether somebody in our family or our community or our neighbors dies on impact and is left on the street until somebody can come and remove their body. And we know that this is true because it's happened. There are people in our community who have died in our streets because somebody was going 30 miles an hour. And I hear what everybody is saying, not everyone is going to follow the rules. That's true of every policy. If, I don't think anybody here should be under the illusion that whenever we create an ordinance, that it's going to have 100% uptake. That's just not how society works. But when you craft policies, and this is, this is what you're trained when you work in public policy and administration, one of the policy alternatives that you always consider is the status quo, which is what I'm hearing a lot of people suggesting right now, that the status quo is better. But the status quo means that people die on our streets. And to recall what former Counselor Coniff was talking about earlier with the parable of the, the starfish. To the two people that died outside of McDonald's, I bet this would have actually been everything for them, that the opportunity- for them, the opportunity to maybe survive a collision and to be able to be with their families, right? That's actually what we're talking about here. So, you know, I'm not trying to minimize people's concerns, but when I hear people saying, "I don't want to deal with the inconvenience of going slow through East Hampton," or, "I don't think other people are going to follow the rules, so we shouldn't try," to me, that's a dishonor to the people that have died in our streets that we haven't done anything to address this. And I get what some have suggested. We certainly do need to do more than just the speed limit. We can do other things. We can apply for grants. We can find money in future budgets to be able to install architecture in our streets that makes it more safe. But right now, this is the one thing that we have at our disposal, and I just, I don't know. As a human being, I can't reconcile the inconvenience of being honked at or having to take a little bit longer to get through the town in order to save somebody's life. That's where I stand, and that was sort of the, behind the conversations that happened in the Public Safety Committee, what we're talking about is the difference between people dying on impact and not. So, you know, to Lindsay Sekula's point, I would be open to doing what she suggested, which is to find, or to release an RFP, to have somebody come in and do an assessment to make sure that we're doing things right. I think that's fair, and I think that's due process, and I think that's good governance to be able to suggest doing something like that. But we cannot rely on, "I don't think people are going to follow the rules," or inconveniences as a reason to excuse people dying in our streets. It's just that the magnitude of the loss that those families have been under, I think merits us being a little inconvenienced to save somebody's life. That's just how I feel. I'm happy to, on behalf of the Public Safety Committee, if the City Council feels that what Ms. Sekula is suggesting would be better, I'm happy to do that, too. We have to do something. The status quo doesn't work. So I'm happy to hear what anybody else has to say or their thoughts on moving forward with an RFP, whatever the case may be.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, what I think you're saying, just to clarify, is that you would be amenable, should it be the council's will, to bring this matter back to committee, to...
Yeah, absolutely.
For further review, if you would like. I mean, if that's the will.
Yes.
Or to vote on it this evening, if that's the will.
Yeah, I am fine with either way. For me personally, I would vote yes on this tonight. But I also recognize that I've been talking about this issue at the committee level since September, so I have a lot, you know what I mean? I've had a long time to digest this. But yes, if that is the will of the council, I would be more than happy to return it back to the committee and follow up with, you know, the next chief of police when that person is hired.
I saw Council Pete.
Sure. Yes, so I, just a couple of things. And I apologize here because I, I should have probably paid more attention to this as it was being discussed, as it is something that kind of interests me in committee. But I'm just curious, how much did we engage with sort of the professional and technical expertise of the city in terms of, like, we have engineering staff in the DPW, like, were they consulted on this? Have they signed off on this?
Yes. Well, I, signed off is probably, I don't want to say yes to signed off because I think that could imply different things than what it actually means, but yes, they were a part of the conversations. DPW was there, the police department participated in these conversations. So, you know, they agreed that if that was something that we wanted to do, they would make it happen. The caveat, of course, is if the City Council tells people that work in the city government they have to do things, I mean, they have to, so, you know what I mean? I don't want to, I don't want to say one way or the other, that they're 100% on board because I think their stance was, if this is what the council passes, then we'll make it work.
Yeah. Could you mind if I ask a follow-up question? Please do. I guess I'm specifically interested in, like, in personnel, sort of the engineering personnel in the city. And, you know, I know that there's people who have some background in traffic design and traffic engineering and whatnot who we do employ. Was there, were they involved? Like, I'm sure that there's folks saying, from the police and DPW, saying, "We'll put up the signs, we'll pull people over, we'll do that sort of stuff." I guess I'm more wondering from, like, from people who have, like, sort of a professional experience, like, to what extent were they involved in this whole thing?
You know, I can't say for sure. You know, I want to recognize also that I'm leading this conversation tonight with a lot of lost institutional knowledge on the topic.
Totally.
So I don't know if those conversations occurred with the former chair of Public Safety, so I can't, I can't say one way or the other.
Okay.
Yeah.
I had just some thoughts, if I may. I share them just so this could be a possibility. In addition to the possibility of removal of the item from the current public hearing and going to committee with a discussion and possible RFP, is there another possible solution? And I'm just tossing this out, it would require splitting up some of the matter. If there was the same feeling about the entire subject or any different feeling about what occurs in our business district, as opposed to what's going on in the thickly settled area, just wanted to give some consideration as to that. I didn't know if there was uniformity of opinion on 25 miles an hour within the business district and maybe reserving a review or another discussion. So they'd throw that out as another possible way of getting through this material and seeing that the will of the people is gone. Council Smith?
If it was split up between the two, I would be more amenable to it. And I hear what you say, but I also feel that we risk the potential of other people being harmed by road rage if we unnecessarily put it down in places of the city that are going to garner more frustration. In my neighborhood, it's going to garner more frustration because we have some real quick roads. My road, Strong Street, right through the middle of it is a great example of that. Over the years, we've had multiple cars that crash right at the bend, which is right where my house is. So I'm not saying that there's not a problem here. I do think there's a problem here. But I'm not convinced that this is the best way forward for where my precinct is way out from the inner-city part. I mean, my, you know, precinct five is almost entirely residential, so it would be entirely this thickly settled, and that would be for the purpose of just the neighborhood. And I understand everything they're saying about the possibility of someone getting hit and all of that. But I also think that because of, because of how far out my precinct is from the rest of it, I just think that, I just know that the majority of people in my neighborhood driving that slow all the way in, like, if you go down to 20 at Williston North Hampton, oh my gosh, people do not like that at all. So to imagine only going five miles higher than that and having someone going all the way back, I think we need to address those types of issues before that. And so for that reason, I would make a motion to remove this without prejudice so that it can be considered more fully at that point.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. I'll entertain discussion on the amendment?
Sure.
The motion hasn't been made. You're, good point. So, might be premature to have, are we making an amendment?
Okay, can we draw the motion request?
No, 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 your motion was to remove...
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice, the entire subject from the agenda.
Send back to committee?
Yes, because I think it still needs to be worked on, so removing it without prejudice...
It's not removed from the agenda, the public hearing is ruled from the agenda and returned back, and the item is sent back to committee. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the part where we're saying to amend the traffic rules and orders, and I would like some more opportunity to have further dialogue with the key stakeholders that have been named here tonight, and I would also like to see more about alternative ways to slow traffic, and some of them haven't worked and have actually been really frustrating, and I'm aware of that. But I agree with what everyone has said about the, I understand in certain places in the city, the 25 mile an hour, absolutely, and I understand that, but equally, I worry about the residents that live out a little further, how that will create that, and I just don't think this is at the point yet that it meets everybody's needs.
Not a motion on the...
Yes. She made it.
I have a motion on the floor. I have a motion on it.
Yes.
So the motion on the floor is to remove from the public hearing and return to the Public Safety Committee. I will entertain any discussion on that subject. Council Pete?
I'm in favor of it. I think that, well, for no other reason than, well, for maybe a couple others, but for the main reason that I have found in my time on the City Council, that when we start talking about technical specifications of, like, what if we split this up into two things? What if we did this or that? In public hearing, it almost always doesn't go well. Like, I feel like that has just been my experience, that, like, you know, sometimes there's small amendments that can be productively made, but in general, if, like, if we're not sure on the general spirit of this thing, or if there's, like, there's big changes that need to be made, it's generally best to send it back to committee. And I also think, given the fact that this would need everyone here to support it, and there seems to be some things, like, that probably, you know, the best thing for this measure's long-term health is probably to get it back and have some of those conversations in committee.
Council Yatik?
Thank you. I also appreciate what everyone has said, and I appreciate Council Riley's point about stepping into this position of reporting out from the Public Safety Committee in this interim or new role. And I think that sending it back to committee will allow us to also perhaps dig into some of this more institutional knowledge that may have been, you know, with past councilors. So I agree with what Council Smith has said and what others have said, too, is I think this is not a bad idea at all. I think it's a good idea, and there are multiple truths at play here. We don't want people to die, and we also want to make sure that we don't create a whole new set of problems by not taking the time to think through this at leisure. And I say "at leisure" not saying that we're, you know, wasting time, but I think this is a very serious thing that will have impact. And whether it's business or residential or citywide or not, I think there just needs a little bit more time spent on understanding what the ramifications are and what the opportunities are as well.
Anyone else?
Just that I also agree with what Council Pete said. I have been in several of those sorts of discussions that he has called out, and it is true, if we hold the vote and it fails tonight, then it is mooted. And I would prefer with that framing that it definitely go back to committee for future considerations, so.
Without prejudice.
Yes, without prejudice. So I just want, I also, as a last thought, I wanted to thank the public and to thank all of you for thoughtfully engaging in the process. Like Counselor Jadzick said, this is really important stuff. So thank you all for your thoughts. When we get a new counselor and the committee is full, I will bring all of this feedback back to the committee to be able to have this conversation further.
I would like to thank everyone who participated in the discussion, including the members of the public. I hope you enjoy seeing the process at work, with your comments being considered. I think this is a very healthy thing for the city, and I look forward to more of it and for the discussion. There is a motion on the floor. I would, seeing no further discuss, no further comments, call for a vote.
Just do a voice vote.
Round here.
I keep looking for that voice vote.
Round here.
All those in favor of returning back to committee without prejudice?
Aye.
I abstain. And the reason for my abstaining, again, is acting mere, I'm not allowed to vote per Charter 3.8. It will be returned back to committee. I will entertain a motion to, or to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Public hearing is closed. Communications from, we're actually back to, I'm sorry, opportunities for further public speak. Anyone in the audience with general public speak about any matter at all? We had one member who wanted to, so we return back to the open speak time.
Anyone entering this country illegally...
Please, if you could re-identify yourself.
Oh, I'm Steve Natuski. I'm from 18 Mineral Street on Ward One. It's off Alaville Road up there.
Thank you.
Okay, on the northwest corner of East Hampton. Anyone entering this country illegally is breaking the law. And anyone who aids and abets illegals is breaking the law. Why, why does East Hampton want to be a welcoming city for these people coming in here? Violent criminals, aliens, especially gang members? We want them to be welcoming to these people. It's ridiculous. It's going to affect our aid from the government, and it's not a good idea. Thank you.
Anyone else? Those who are here remotely, anyone care to speak on anything on your mind? I see Liz Perry, you're up, if you would unmute yourself.
Hi again, that's Liz Perry from Orchard Street. Just FYI, entering the country illegally is a civil offense, not a criminal one. And also FYI, the statistics show that immigrants in this country commit far less crime than the people that are born here. Statistically speaking, I am more likely to be raped and murdered by a man that was born in this country than a man who was not. And if I have to live in this country with men who were born here, then I think I'm okay with living with men who weren't born here, who will be less likely to hurt me. Thank you.
Thank you. Prevent PA, if you would unmute yourself.
Yeah, hi, Darlene Orvieto. Civil or criminal, I believe that we should follow the law, and I think that we shouldn't put citizens at risk for losing funding for things that are important to our livelihoods and our well-being and our safety. And I think that it's, I think there's a lot of ignorance as to the vast amount of funding that has been kept from citizens throughout the country and put towards illegal aliens. People freak out just over the term, which I think is incredibly immature. I just, I think that there's obviously a lot of education that's needed, and most people aren't getting it because they're watching mainstream, bought-out media. And most people aren't getting it because they're watching mainstream, bought-out media. And I really think that East Hampton needs, as a city, needs to follow the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Kayam Jamrog McQuaid?
Counselors, um, my name's Kayam Jamrog McQuaid. I'm a resident in 8 Jones Drive. Um, I just wanted to express my support for the welcoming city ordinance. Um, I feel very strongly about this as a resident of the city, as a lifelong resident of the city. These people are our neighbors, our community members, even if people outside the city. I think that's important for us to send a message to combat the fear that they're feeling right now. So thank you to this council for affirming that message.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public speak? Now's your chance. Going once, going twice. This closes public speak. Thank you. Communications from elected officials, boards, and commissions. We did receive a letter from the contributory retirement board discussing the COLA, the cost of living adjustments for retirees, notification of 3% will be the retirement, the East Hampton Retirement Board's move to recommend a 3% COLA adjustment. Is there, uh? Wait with me a second. We did have an issue of an open meeting law complaint against the City Council, brought by Mr. Eric Pullen. And there has been this meeting of the Rules and Government Relations Committee, where it was voted three to nothing to recommend that the matter is not an, his complaint wasn't an equal, uh, uh, open meeting law violation. There was a discussion with the council president, who drafted the following letter. And I'd like to put that into the record, if I may. Dear Mr. Pullen, I am writing in response to an open meeting law complaint received in the City Council's February 5th packet regarding an alleged violation of the open meeting law related to meetings held on December 18 and January 22. The City Council takes all open meeting law concerns seriously and appreciates the opportunity to address this matter. Response to allegations, the complaint asserts that your appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission was deemed denied a favorable recommendation to the full council due to four anonymous complaints. As a point of clarification, the role of the appointment committee is solely to recommend or not recommend an appointment to the full council. It does not have the authority to block an appointment, as was stated in the complaint. After thoroughly reviewing the allegations, we determine that no violation of the open meeting law occurred. Compliance with Section 940 CMR 2905 and whistleblower protections. Your complaint referencing Section 2905 as a basis for an open meeting law violation. This section describes the complaint process in general, and not some act or action in which and of itself violates the open meeting law. To the extent you are referencing 940 CMR 2905-1, this section states a public body need not, and the Attorney General will not investigate or address anonymous complaints. A public body need not address a complaint that is not signed by the complainant. A public body need not address a complaint that is not filed using the Attorney General's complaint form. This provision applies specifically to the filing of anonymous open meeting law complaints, not the acceptance of anonymous concerns regarding appointments. Accepting anonymous complaints ensures that individuals can report concerns without fear of retaliation. Given that the Parks and Recreation Commission interacts with both public employees and the, and general public, it's important to provide a safe avenue for individuals to voice concerns without fear of retribution. Currently, neither council rules nor state laws prohibit the acceptance of anonymous complaints. The CMC City Council remains committed to upholding transparency and compliance with the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. Definition of an open meeting law violation, under Mass. law, an open meeting law violation occurs when a public body fails to adhere to legal requirements governing meetings. Common violations include a failure to post meeting notices in advance, holding discussions or deliberations outside of a properly noticed meeting, improperly entering an executive session without filing the, the, uh, without following required procedures, failure, failing to provide public access or adequate meeting records. After reviewing the complaint, including the provisions cited, the East Hampton City Council determined that no violations of the open meeting law occurred, as it is and is not in violation of 940 CMR 2905, for a counselor to discuss matters with third parties who are not also counselors outside a public hearing. And there's no requirement that a counselor discloses with whom her or she discusses such matters. Next steps. The CMC City Council remains committed to complying with all local and state laws. We understand that you feel misrepresented in the appointment process, and we acknowledge your concerns. Moving forward, the council will review the appointment process to ensure a fair and transparent experience, both for the appointees and for those who wish to raise concerns but may not feel safe or comfortable speaking publicly. If you have any further questions or require additional documentation, please feel free to reach out. Thank you for bringing this matter to our attention. Sincerely, Salem Derby, President of the East Hampton City Council. Since this is a matter of, of, for the council to resolve, I would ask for an endorsement of the letter, and I would entertain such a motion.
So moved.
With there being a motion in a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none?
I'm just wondering how the vote would go for this, because I feel like I should abstain since it was an action that I was involved in. And this ruling is, but I feel like if I abstain from the vote?
That's a good point.
Then we won't have enough people for it.
I, I would, I would feel your obligations as a counselor would override
Okay.
Your position.
Okay.
So in my opinion, you would vote on the matter, or could not be voted on tonight.
Okay.
So I would ask you to vote on the matter, one way or the other. So, that being said? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Motion passes. The mayor's vice, President Vice President, Community Commissioner Salem Rashandra. We do have a vacancy. With the resignation of Counselor Zarrett, we have a vacancy with the council. It is an at-large position. According to the city charter, the matter must be dealt with within 30 days. But we have a schedule of, of, of a meeting to vote, since no one has the required number of votes, received the required number of votes, according to charter, from the last election. That being said, proposal was made by Salem Derby, Council President, for the following schedule. The timeline, February 19th will announce the filling, the vacancy in the timeline. That's tonight. February 24th, that's Monday. If I'm not mistaken, Monday. The 24th, application letters due to the city clerk by 12 noon. And two days later, there would be a special meeting on the 6th, on the 26th, at 6:00 PM to meet the applicants and vote. If that schedule meets with the approval of these members, we shall move it forward. I would ask for a motion.
So moved.
Motion in a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The mayor's communication. Before Counselor, I mean, before Mayor LaChapelle went away, she had asked that this matter be moved forward to the full council. And that was the matter of an affirmation of the welcoming city trust ordinance. We do have an ordinance on the books. And so I am now taking off the hat of Council Acting Vice, or Council Acting President, and putting on the hat of Acting Mayor, and bringing to you the mayor's communication. As mayor, I reaffirm the city's steadfast commitment to protecting the rights, safety, and dignity of all East Hampton residents and employees, especially newcomers, immigrant families, and unfairly targeted communities. East Hampton is a community that actively upholds the values inclusion, of inclusion, diversity, and the well-being of everyone who lives or works here. These values are codified in the City Ordinance, Chapter 13, Article 1, Welcoming City Trust Ordinance, which directs all departments to build trust and fairness between our local government and its residents, employees, and visitors. Under this ordinance, no part of our city government, including police, can be federalized. These, these commitments are embedded in a citywide policy that encodes of conduct, the East Hampton Police Department policy, and training protocols. Both attached to this memo specifically address the non-federalization of local police. Our city's leadership continues to monitor state and federal developments. We are working closely with state agencies, including the governors and the Attorney General's offices, and the Department of Secondary and Elementary Education to ensure our actions and policies reflect our legal obligations and core values. Thus concludes the mayor's communication. I would ask that we ponder on the matter. Think about it. These are important questions. We have an ordinance. We will follow it. Council communications, announcements, and standing committee reports. Council communications, is there anyone here who has communications? I see Counselor Peak.
Yeah, it's a little late because the folks left. But just, just for the record, um, I
We'll try harder.
Don't usually, I, I, I'm disgusted by what's happening across the street from me with my constituents who are having their rents jacked up by a predatory out-of-state landlord. I wish that we had some local lever that we could pull to do anything about it. We don't, so I hope that the state finds the courage to do anything about it. I, I don't have much more to say, other than just that I think it's completely disgusting and reprehensible that that's happening to people.
Counsel Riley? Thank you. So it is that time of year again, where Mrs. Brown's We the People students have won the statewide competition in Massachusetts. This is officially eight years in a row that they have been state champions. And like past years, it's time to fundraise for the national competition in Washington, DC. So to give you an idea of what is needed for our students to engage in this competition, the cost to send one of the students to the We the People Nationals is $1,400. This covers everything, from transportation, from meals, everything that they need. So it's $1,400 per student, and there are 30 students that are going this year. So you can do the math. It's a pretty sizable amount of money. I have donated my February City Council stipend. I'm not asking anybody else to do that. This is just something that I, I do every year. This is a very important cause for me. If anybody in the public or the council wants to donate money to help these students out, you can either contact me directly. My email address is B. Riley at easthamptonma.gov. I'll get you all the links that you need. Or you can reach out to Ms. Brown directly. Her email address is K. Brown at E.P.S.D. dot U.S. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will say, we are lucky here in East Hampton to have the We the People
Yeah.
Folks. It, it, this is just so, so unusual, so, so unique, so, so powerful. And we do need to do everything we possibly can to support the group and the good work that goes on with further knowledge. Counselor Smith?
I'd like to speak to that directly, because I have had a child that has participated in We the People. And one of the things that I really love about our city and our public school is that it allows our students these types of participation that are in addition to our sports. And so it's much more inclusive that a lot more students will participate in it. And I just want to talk about that $1,400, because I know that in my child's experience, when it came to college admissions and when it came to interviews, that was the most valuable thing that all of the admissions teams in asking my child questions about their experiences and, and their readiness for college, they all went back to We the People. So I really can't express enough how instrumental this program has been for my child's success. I also want to say that I really appreciate that Ms. Brown also does not pressure students to do this. I have three other children who there's no way they would have wanted to get in front of that microphone under high pressure to talk about the Constitution. And so I just want to make sure that everyone knows that, that it's not every person in every social studies class, but anybody who wants to join, regardless of whether or not they're, you know, in the National Honor Society, or anything else that we would normally see as a, as a, really a gatekeeping methodology. This doesn't happen in this program. And so I just really, I don't think a lot of people see that part of it. And I just wanted to bring that to the public front.
Thank you. On to Finance and reports from the standing committees.
Thank you, Mr. Acting President slash Acting Mayor. So, sorry, I just, I gotta get that in every time I can. So we have, really just, we, we haven't met since our last meeting, but we do have one item the city sent up for immediate consideration. It's very rare that a financial item be sent up for immediate consideration, but I, I think you'll generally understand why. So it is an intra-departmental transfer. An intra-departmental transfer is also rarely come to City Council, because the department usually can, can just do them, and there's a department head. What makes this one interesting is that the transfer is about a CPA appropriation, specifically our CPA appropriation to the Old Town Hall renovation project. Essentially, there is about $25,000, a little less than $25,000, in funds that need to be spent. But in order for them to be spent, just because of the nature of where the project is, the timeline, and how things have gone, for this particular money to be spent, it needs to be transferred from the account titled Old Town Hall Second Floor Design Reserved to the account titled Old Town Hall Second Floor Construction Project. And this is just, they're, they're working on the financials behind the scenes, and our brilliant auditor has come to the determination that they're not actually going to be able to move this money out of the account, just because of the, the place that it's in at the moment. So they asked us to, to move this. It's going to the exact same project, so it's, I, I don't see why, any reason why anyone would have an objection to this. It's kind of just a bookkeeping thing. But because the money is a CPA project, and there's just, just sort of the, the structure of the administration, administrative nature of it, we have to sign off on this. So, um, so I would acknowledge that if any counselor has any objection to the matter, this matter will be referred to the Finance Committee Yes.
For review. If not, I would be happy to proceed. Is there anyone here who believes that they have an objection at this time? Thank you.
Okay. I had a thing about, if, if there was an objection, it would just make things slightly a bigger pain in Michael Owen's butt. But like, I don't think it's like, it wouldn't be the end of the world, but be the end of the world, but this would be the easiest thing for everyone. So, with that in mind, I will make the following request in the form of a motion. Request is hereby made for the following appropriation. Amount requested, $24,690.47 to be transferred, to be transferred from Old Town Hall Second Floor Design Reserved, $24,690.47, to be transferred to Old Town Hall Second Floor Construction Project, $24,690.47. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, for construction phase two of an ADA accessible elevator.
Second. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Super.
Finance.
The other thing, we are, we'll be, we have two items that I'd like to make a first reading on, but before I do that, yeah, we'd be meeting Wednesday at 5:00 PM because we've got a 6:00 PM, is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
Because we've got 6:00 PM, City Council, need to do the special stuff, so we'll be meeting Wednesday at 5:00 PM to discuss these two appropriations. So, with that in mind, I'll make the following requests in the form of a motion, and these would, I would also be setting a public hearing for these for our next regular business meeting, which-
March 4th.
March 5th. Get a little calendar up here. Okay. So, with that said, at 6:15 in these chambers. Okay. Request is hereby made for the following appropriation. Amount requested, $2,000, sorry, $286,103 to be transferred from Capital Stabilization to be transferred to FY25 Western Star Dump Truck. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. This appropriation will fund the replacement of Truck 33. The vehicle was a 1995 International 490, or 4900 heavy-duty truck that has been removed from service in 2023 due to extensive rot and safety issues. We are requesting $286,103 to be transferred from Capital Stabilization to fund this expenditure. And then the second one, request is hereby made for a following appropriation. Amount requested, $106,799 to be transferred from Capital Stabilization, $106,799, to be transferred to Electric/Hybrid Vehicle Leasing, $30,978. Electric/Hybrid Vehicle Leasing, $2,046. FY25 Police Electric/Hybrid Vehicle, $56,275. FY25 Fire Electric/Hybrid Vehicle, $14,500. FY25 Admin Electric/Hybrid Vehicle, $3,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. The Department of Public Works has been working with Move EV and Enterprise Fleet Service, Services to further the city's transition away from gas-powered light-duty vehicles in favor of electric and hybrid alternatives in coordination with the Police, Fire, and Parks Department. We have developed a list of 10 vehicles that can be acquired in this initial round of leasing agreements. Leasing these 10 vehicles will allow for older gas-powered vehicles to be removed from service and represents a major step forward towards achieving the goals outlined in East Hampton's Climate Action Plan. So, that was all a motion.
I'll take a second. There being a motion and a second on the aforementioned items, any further discussion?
I have a point of clarification, if, if you would. Can we ask any questions about this, or is this only to move it to committee?
This is to move it to committee.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Then I have no question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, don't take this. Abstain, motion, motion passes. So, we have public hearings set for March 5th for the two items, and at 6:15.
And that concludes.
That concludes, okay, good. Public Safety.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the Public Safety Committee has not met since our last meeting. As the current acting chair and being down one member, I felt it was best to wait until we've appointed a new city counselor and to reevaluate committee assignments. So, for Public Safety Committee thus concludes.
Thank you. Appointments? Counselor Riley, you're up again.
All right. So, yeah, the Appointment Committee has also not met since our last meeting. If you recall, at our last meeting, I mentioned that I was going to move the schedule around a little bit so that way Counselors Jadzik and Counselor Smith could finish their participation in the Municipal Leadership Academy. I, I said it then before, and I'll say it again, this is a very important initiative, and I'm happy to see city councilors engaging in the process. That being said, there is two, two new mayoral appointments and a city council appointment that will be at our next meeting, which will be holding on Tuesday, March 4th at 6:00 PM, and for scheduling reasons, it will be in the basement, in the conference room in the basement. So, typically, we meet here behind city council chambers. Because we're meeting on a Tuesday, scheduling reasons, we needed to be downstairs in the basement.
Did you catch the time?
Uh, 6:00 PM.
You may have said it, yes.
Yes.
6:00 PM, Tuesday. For the mayoral appointments.
That's correct.
Would you-
And I can move those to-
Like to move them to-
Perfect.
Committee?
So, I move to send two mayoral appointments and one city council appointment to the Appointment Committee.
Do you happen to have the named individuals?
Yes, I do, so, the-
And the positions?
Yes, so the city council appointment is for the B's Committee. So, recall when we set the committee up, one of the positions on that committee is an ex officio member, which is a member of City Council. That position belonged to former Counselor Zaret, and Council President Derby has recommended Counselor Denham to be the ex officio member serving on the B's Committee. So, that's the City Council appointment. And then I have right here, let me just scroll past a couple of pages, I apologize. I want to get the names of the committees correct. Okay, here we go. And the, the two mayoral appointments, Emily Russo, who is our HR Director, to be appointed to the East Hampton Retirement Board, and then Samantha Mater, who is the mayoral appointment for the Board of Health. So, I move that all three of those aforementioned people be sent to the Appointment Committee.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to move two mayoral appointments and one city council appointment. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain.
All right, thank you, and thus concludes.
Thus concludes. Ordinance, Counselor Denham, God is not here this evening, so I guess you're on, Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Counselor Kuzynski. Ordinance has not met since our last full council meeting, so I have no ongoing report. However, we do have our next Council Ordinance Committee meeting on Tuesday, February 26th at 6 o'clock, where I will be reviewing the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership zoning ordinance recommendations.
Thank you.
And, no, the other thing, I, I just wanted to request a 90-day extension for the Ordinance Review Committee's final report item.
Second. Motion in a second to extend for 90 days the Ordinance Review Committee's final report? All those in, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Abstain.
Okay, thus concludes.
Thus concludes, thank you very much. Property. I'll take that briefly. The Property Committee has not met. We are awaiting further election of the council, so we'll be meeting in the future. This concludes? Thank you. Rules and Government Relations, oh, I'm up again. We've dealt with the issue at hand, and they, so I have no report, no further report on that. Old Business, pending, no. Mayoral appointments, done. City Council Appointment, B's, Electric. Wow. I think we're there. Is there anything else? I will take the motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much. This concludes.